Here. Ms. Peterson of Washington. Steppen of Frankfurt, here. Mr. White of Troy.
Here.
Chairman Valone, Manhattan.
Here. In your package you have the meeting minutes for January 6, 2015. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Our minutes are approved. Mr. Steppen, do you have any claims or communications tonight?
Yes, sir. Cases voted on tonight will advance. Just change it, okay?
Let's go keep changing that. They're going to ask in February 10. In this room.
Okay, in this room. The land use command. Commission, here's various cases to a conclusion.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to swear everyone in mass, everyone that plans to give a testimony. So at this time, I ask you to raise your right hand and say a do after I swear you're in. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help me God. I do? Thank you. At this time, we ask you to please turn off your cell phones. The commission is comprised of seven commissioners that we do need four to have a forum. You do need four yes votes for approval. We have five commissioners tonight. If for any reason you'd like to continue your case, because we only have five commissioners, and wait for the full commission to be here, please come up to the podium when your case is called. On cases that are large and has a multitude of objectors or concerned citizens, we may limit each person to five minutes with a testimony. And we ask that you do not repeat objections or comments to those that are already and previously presented to us. Okay. We'll open up the cases at this time. First case on the agenda is case 6214, we have a request for continuance. And our continuance to March 3, 2015. Do we have a motion?
It was not 6213.
Is it 13?
Yeah. No, it's not my review.
Alright, we have a motion to continue case 6213.
Go move.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye? All opposed, motion carries. Next case on the agenda, case 6214-V2. Sergio Arbosa, Jr. Mike McDaniel will open this case. We have requests for two variances.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Valone, members of the commission. This case takes place in Lockport Township. The applicant is requesting a variance for a lot area from 20,000 square feet to 11,595.5 square feet. A second variance for a lot width from 90 feet to 80.01 feet. Subject property zone R3. We have two photos of the property currently displayed for you. Picture in the upper right-hand corner is looking southwest across the property. Picture below that is looking northeast across the subject property. We have an aerial property. The property is identified with the red arrow on the map. It's less than a quarter mile east of Route 171 or Archer Avenue and less than a quarter of a mile north of Thornton. Now, this map currently displayed depicts the variance area. This subject property is currently configured as a traditional lot plus a flag pole that extends to a neighboring street. The applicant is requesting this variance because he wishes to convey a portion of the property to his neighbor. Because the convenience of that area decreases the lot area, we've asked that the property be brought into compliance. Surrounding zoning map is currently displayed for you. The orange indicates residential zoning. The pink is the city of Lockport. Staff recommends approval, variance for lot area from 20,000 square feet to 11,595.5 square feet, and approval of variance for lot width from 90 feet to 80.1 feet. And that concludes staff's analysis.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions to the staff? Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, before I call the applicant up, do any of the commissioners have any questions they want to ask the applicant on this particular case? No. Is the applicant here tonight? Okay, are there any objectors to this case or concerned citizens? Okay, applicant, you're more than welcome to come down and speak if you do not want to, or you don't have to at this time. Okay, thank you. Okay, in case 6214-V2, I'd like to consider a motion for the first variance.
Mr. Chairman, case number 6214-V2, I'd like to make a motion for approval of variance for a lot area from 20,000 square feet to 11,595.5 square feet.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a second request for variance.
Mr. Chairman, same case number 6214-V2, I'd like to make approval of variance for lot width from 90 feet to 80 feet, 80.1 feet.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Is there paperwork for that? Okay. We have some paperwork for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Next case on the agenda, case 6222-M. We have requests for a map amendment. Mike McDaniel from our staff will open the case.
Thank you, Chairman Valone. The applicant is requesting a map amendment from A2 to R2. This zoning case takes place in Frankfurt Township. The purpose of the request is to allow for a five-acre parcel to be divided, creating two, two-and-a-half acre parcels. Subject property is currently zoned A2. There is a residential home and one cell tower located on the property. There's a photo of the property currently displayed. We have three additional photos of the surrounding area. The picture in the upper left-hand corner is looking east on St. Francis Road. The picture in the upper right-hand corner is looking west on St. Francis Road. And the picture of the vines looking south across St. Francis Road. An aerial property, the property is highlighted by the red arrow. Property is located on the north side of St. Francis Road, slightly over one mile east of US Route 45. With the surrounding zoning map, again, the property is indicated by the red arrow. The light green is A2 zoning, which is a rural residential zoning district. The pink towards the north of the map is the village of Timmy Park. And the purple in the southwest corner of the map is the village of Frankfurt. The land use department did receive some agency comments. Frankfurt Township has reviewed this request and has no objection. Will South Cook Soil and Water Conservation District prepared a natural resource information report. Will South Cook's findings is that they do not recommend approval of the zoning change due to the fact that future construction would be in or near the 100-year flood plain. With the vision of this property creating two, two-and-a-half acre parcels, the intent of the applicant is to construct a single-family residence on that new two-and-a-half acre parcel. Staff recommends approval of the map amendment from A2 to R2. The request conforms with the land resource management plan and is compatible with the established trend of development in the surrounding area, and that concludes staff's analysis.
Michael?
Yes.
In regards to the son of your flood plain, is there a creek nearby?
There is, and it should be understood that at the time, the applicant wishes to construct a single-family residence, we will require submittal of a site plan that's signed and sealed by a licensed professional engineer. The home will have to be constructed above that 100-year base flood elevation. If the home is constructed within, the base flood elevation compensatory storage must be provided to avoid any negative impacts to that flood plain and surrounding property.
Does this creek actually go through the property?
I believe it's located to the north, and the flood plain extends southward onto this property.
Okay. Any other questions, the staff? Okay, thank you. This time, the applicants are here today?
Yes.
Okay, do I have to come up?
Not, I have nothing to say.
Well, we may have a couple of questions. Can I ask one? Please state your name for the record.
Kathleen Aralano.
Okay. I guess the only question, I did have a question as far as this particular property. Is there, or does the creek run, does the creek run across the property, or is it off the property?
The creek does run on the property in the back.
Okay, is it shallow creek, or is it, what's that part of the creek, Ranch and Baker Creek?
I believe it, Union Ditch.
Union Ditch.
Oh, Union Ditch, okay.
Uh, creek.
And the intent is probably build another home on one of these?
Correct. I've had a home there for 35 years. I've never seen flooding ever.
But that's just the term sometimes.
Right.
The 100-year term.
Right.
Okay. Is there any other questions to the applicant? Do you have anything to add?
I really don't, just that it's going to be another single-family home for my daughter and just a modest home.
Sure. And you've lived there how long?
35 years.
Oh, so you know whether it's going to
I was new, I bought the property 37 years ago and built the house 35 and never, I've never had an issue with water anywhere on the property. Except if you went down way near the creek, which is very long, hundreds of feet.
Okay, we just, we just ask you because, you know, sometimes the agency
I understand.
Gives the recommendation sometimes.
Right.
You live there, so you know best.
It also said in that report that an engineer's study would outweigh whatever they had to say.
Okay.
And I did have it all studied.
Okay.
And the engineer said that the home would be completely out of the flood plain, not in it, nowhere near it, and there's plenty of buildable space and septic area.
Okay, well, that's fine. Thank you. On case 6222-M, I'd like to entertain a motion for the requested map amendment.
Mr. Chairman, regarding to case number 6222-M, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the map amendment from A2 to R.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Carruthers?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Steppen, both chairs. Mr. White?
Yes.
Chairman Valone?
Yes, motion approved. Thank you. Okay, next case on the agenda. We have a major subdivision waiver for Aralano subdivision. Mr. Mike McDaniel will open this up.
Thank you, Chairman Valone. This request relates to the map amendment that you just voted on. The applicant is requesting a waiver from Sections 26-01-A and 26-02-A of the Will County subdivision ordinance. Section 26-01-A requires connection to public water supply. When a subdivision takes place within 1,320 feet of an existing water main, section 26-02-A requires connection to a public sanitary sewer system when the subdivision is within 1,320 feet of an existing sanitary sewer main. The land use department has discussed this proposal with the village of Frankfurt, who does have public sewer water available within 1,320 feet of the proposed subdivision. The village of Frankfurt is taking the position that there's no economic benefit to providing serving water to one parcel that will be two acres in size. Staff recommends approval of this major subdivision waiver request.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions, staff? Does the applicant have anything to add? No? Okay. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion for the requested subdivision waiver.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the major subdivision waiver.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the zoning ordinance tax amendments for dynamic displays slash outdoor lighting and use table. Mike McDaniel from our staff will open up this case.
Chairman Valone, we could, could we please start with item number two, which is the amendment to the outdoor lighting requirements?
Okay. My name is a little mixed up, I'm sorry. So we'll start with the zoning ordinance tax amendment for dynamic displays, outdoor lighting, and use table.
Okay, so the first one is outdoor lighting. I'm going to give a brief overview of what this tax amendment is, and then I'm going to ask the commission to commence a public hearing on the proposed tax amendment. In 2012, when the land use department did a comprehensive revision of the existing zoning ordinance, a decision was made to remove any lighting standards that would be applied to residential properties. There has been several issues since that time, where outdoor lights are creating hazards or a nuisance to residential properties. What this tax amendment proposes to do is to establish a simple regulation that states that lighting on residentially zoned properties cannot create a hazard or public nuisance. Now, I'd ask the commission to commence public hearings on that topic.
Well, this time, I'd like to make a motion to open up the public hearing for this zoning ordinance tax amendment.
Go move.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Are there any comments from the public on this? Okay, this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Go move.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Chairman Valone, if the commission could please vote to convey the comments from the public hearing in this tax amendment to the land use committee for consideration.
Go move. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the ordinance of the Will County Board amending section 155-13.70, dynamic displays, zoning ordinance tax amendments?
Yes. Again, I'll give a brief overview of what this tax amendment is, and then ask that we proceed to public hearing. Dynamic displays are electronic messaging boards. The zoning ordinance currently prohibits electronic signage in the A1 zoning district and residential zoning districts. The issue with that prohibition is that there are numerous uses that are permitted in residential and agricultural zoning districts that wish to utilize dynamic displays. One such example is the VFW, which is located in Plainfield Township. The VFW is located in a residential zoning district. They wish to install a new sign, the as of electronic messaging board. This tax amendment will allow for dynamic displays in residential zoning and agricultural zoning as a special use permit. As a special use permit, that will allow both staff and planning zoning commission, county board, to review each request specific to the area in which they're requesting to ensure there's no negative impacts to surrounding residential property owners. At this time, I would ask that the public hearing commence.
Okay, this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the dynamic, 155-13.70, dynamic displays, zoning ordinance tax amendment.
Go move.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Is there any public comment? This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Go move.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, do you need a motion for?
Yes, convey the comments from the public hearing in this tax amendment to the land use committee for consideration.
Go move.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. Next, we have a request for the ordinance of the Will County Board amending section 155-7.30, use cable, dynamic displays. Mike McDaniel will open up this.
Thank you, Chairman Valone. This is slightly repetitive because it is a separate agenda item. I believe it was best to have a separate public hearing for this item. This will amend the zoning ordinance's use cable to identify that dynamic displays as a special use in the zoning districts that have been identified, and we ask a public hearing be opened on this topic.
Okay, this time, I'd like to entertain the opening of the public hearing.
Go move.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, I'm opening the public hearing. Is there any public comment?
Motion to close?
We have a motion to close, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Now closed. Now, we made a motion to forward the public comments.
To the land use committee.
Go move. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the ordinance of the Will County Board amending section 903.2.8, group R automatic sprinkler system requirements of the Will County Building Code ordinance. Owen from the Building Department will open this case.
Thank you, Chairman. All residential occupancies under the IBC require sprinklers for life safety. Former committee members requested new language to allow owner-occupied residential occupancies without sprinklers. The tax amendment before you would allow for owner-occupied residential occupancy without sprinklers. Would I ask the chairman to open the public hearing on this topic?
Okay, this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Go move.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Is there public comment? Yes?
Yep. Jim Eustace, Will County Board member.
Can you pull the mic down, sir?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, as I'm sure this committee is aware of, that the county just did a code revision, and there was quite a bit of discussion on residential sprinkling. And even though we chose not to require residential sprinkling, we didn't keep it placed there commercial industrial, we continued to have a sprinkling requirement. I think it was difficult for the board to approve residential residences in industrial zonings. That, in my opinion, is a little bit of a stretch to begin with. And now to say, well, we're not, even though it's industrial zoning, where we require a, we will allow residential under the special use. I don't know if it's a good idea to relax the sprinkling requirement. And I know I'm going to have many bites at this apple, but I thought that comment here could be perhaps helpful, and helpful to this committee to recognize the fact that this could potentially be a slippery slope. And I do think it puts an extraordinary, well, maybe I shouldn't say extraordinary, but certainly puts another burden on the land use departments to make sure that the non-sprinkling is being restricted to the areas that are residential. And what areas are we going to allow residential? So I do think we have to be very cautious relaxing our current ordinances or codes in this area. Thank you.
And I agree. Thank you. Are there any other comments? This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Go move.
We have a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed, and at this time, we'd like to entertain a motion to forward the public hearing comments on this public hearing to the land use committee.
Go move.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, are there any staff announcements at this time? Mike?
Mr. Chairman Valone, just Kurt mentioned you had already introduced Owen, but just to clarify, Owen is serving as our interim chief building official. I think you were aware that, or perhaps you weren't, so I'll now make you aware. Mr. Semplinsky, with whom you're familiar, who had served for eight years as our chief building official, has taken a position as the maintenance superintendent at the Will County Division of Transportation. He's out there shoveling the snow off our streets right now. So with his departure, Owen, who has served for many years as the residential reviewer within the building division, will be functioning as the interim chief building official. We are recruiting for a permanent replacement for Ray, but that's what Owen does for us. I'll now ask Mike to introduce another new staff member.
Mike?
Everyone, this is Natalie Cubic. Natalie joined our office last week as a development analyst, as a position that was formerly known as the assistant planner. Natalie is a graduate of the University of Illinois, Urbana-Champaign, and she will be starting work on zoning cases shortly.
Great, welcome. Kurt, is there any, I know you talked a month or two ago about the Iliana Expressway and our involvement. Is there any kind of update on that at this point?
Well, as you've probably read, with the change of administration, the subject matter of the Iliana has undergone or will be undergoing sustained review by the new administration before moving forward. That's had an impact on that large planning grant, that Iliana corridor planning grant that I was telling you about, that the county had applied for and had received assurances under the prior administration that we'd be receiving it. But that wasn't totally signed, sealed, and delivered prior to the start of the new administration. So it'll probably be a while before we actually receive that planning grant until the administration has had time to reassess and reevaluate their path forward on the Iliana matter.
Well, when you say change of administration, are you referring to county level, or are you talking to state level?
The state.
Okay, I just want to
There's been no change of administration on the Iliana.
Do any of the commissioners, thank you. Do any of the commissioners, anyone else have anything to add? Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Go move.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting closed. Thank you. Meeting closed, thank you.